Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Mary Devers.
Mr. Smurl.
Here.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
I would like to make a motion to take from the table file of the Council Number 81 of 2023.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table file of the Council Number 81, 2023. This ordinance is the city's capital budget for 2024. It had been tabled until a public hearing was held last week. It is being taken from the table and placed in Seventh Order for final vote. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third Order, 3A. Overtime report for all departments as provided by City Controller received September 27, 2023, for the period January through September 2023. 3B. Document received September 26, 2023, from PFM Financial Advisors LLC regarding the general obligation note series 2023.
Are there any comments on any third order items?
I have a comment for each of the third order items. For 3A, it's been something I've been bringing attention to for some time. DPW administration overtime is at 168 percent, and at this point in time, DPW refuse is at 107, with one more quarter in the year to go. Also, item 3B, the document from PFM Financial, there's a correction. The interest rate on the fixed borrowing is 4.85 percent rather than 4.75 percent.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Does anyone else have any more comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a couple. So I would first like to wish all of our residents of Italian heritage a happy National Italian American Heritage Month. With that said, I might be jumping the gun, but I don't see the Italian flag out there flying like it normally is for every other heritage month that we do. So maybe they're waiting till Columbus Day, but would you please reach out to administration to see if that's going to happen?
I will, sir.
Thank you. I would also like to wish Grand Police Officers Baumann and Rawlings a speedy recovery from injuries received this past weekend after responding to a call. Lastly, the North Scranton Neighborhood Association Watch will be having their annual Oktoberfest to include music, fun, and refreshments. It'll be this Saturday, October 7th, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the VFW Post 25, 2291 Rockwell Avenue, and that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. Any other council members?
Well, Mr. McAndrew beat me to it. I was going to announce the North Scranton Neighborhood Association Oktoberfest, but while I have an opportunity, I guess I should say, October is also German American Heritage Month, and I don't often have the time to say that, but just like to make it known. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Smurl.
Dr. Rothschild. I have two things. This Sunday will be the 26th running of the Steam Town Marathon. The race will begin at 8:00 a.m. at Forest City High School, and it will run through the 14 communities and finish here in front of Lackawanna County Courthouse on North Washington Avenue. Hopefully, the first runner should get there somewhere around 10:20 a.m. I would just ask, we try to do a pretty good job as far as feeding traffic across the course. There's lots of support out there from the local police and lots of volunteers working intersections. We would just ask people to be a little patient. If you're coming into the city and you want to get around the course between the hours of 10 o'clock and, you know, 2 o'clock, you can go left on Jefferson and down Lackawanna takes you right around the course. Greenridge Street's another good place to cross the path if you're going from Dunmore Greenridge over to North Scranton. We are excited to have well over 1,000 runners from 35 states coming to our city to stay in our hotels, spend their money here, and run 26 miles and raise some money for St. Joseph Center along the way. So we're excited about that this coming Sunday. Also, I received this afternoon an emergency certificate. This is to certify an emergency exists requiring the immediate passage of an attached ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to ratify any and all documents necessary to expedite the passage of said legislation, which will provide continued emergency response efforts and resources in light of devastating storm September 9th, 2023. This request for the approval by city council is made because time continues to be of the essence to help the residents of Scranton impacted by the storm. Signed by Mayor Page Kepard Cognetti and certified by our city controller, John Murray. That legislation will be brought up next week. That's all I have at this time.
Fourth Order, citizen participation.
Derek Rains. Just would like to remind everyone, please respect each of the speakers that come up. If everyone could just sit quietly, give everyone an opportunity to speak. Everyone gets five minutes, and we'll take it from there. Thank you very much.
Tonight, so if somebody lets me know on the time issue, because obviously I can't see the time. Derek Rains, 919 Monroe Avenue, here for a couple different things today. Number one, my reoccurring issue. Mr. McAndrew, last time I talked to you about this, I believe your initial response was something along the line of, holy cow, I thought that would have been taken care of by now. It hasn't been. Dr. Rothschild, last time I talked to you about it, you stood there and you assured me it would be taken care of, and it still has not been taken care of. The reoccurring problem, Mr. Petroface came out, inspected everything, once again ensured me that it would be taken care of, and once again, it still was not taken care of. Being a person from Indiana, your word is your word. If you have a city employee who tells you they're going to do something, you expect them to do that. My wife and I pay our taxes because we're expected to, and I expect the same thing from the city employees. There's still holes. I believe, Mr. King, we mentioned this before, there's still holes on my corners. There's still no truncated those pads on the corners that tell you, you know, when you're coming before you drop off. The curb cut, which obviously we don't have those either, and they've never been taken care of. There's still a hole, which I said to Mr. Petroface, why don't you just get a bag of concrete and fill it up? And that hole is still there, and that is a bus stop, and all the kids sit there every day, and that hole is still there. And that's got to be, just in that, has to be, I don't know how many years. And I just don't understand the amount of money that my wife and I pay in taxes. It's just appalling. My wife, who works at Community Medical Center, she purchased a new truck because my handicap van would not be able to go through the snow in Scranton, which brings me to my next thing. Does the Scranton city looked at what's going to happen this year? You know, is there any plan in place on what we're going to do with snowfall if we get two feet of snow? Is there anything that's going to be taken care of so people are going to be able to go out? And as I said before, my wife's the closest employee at Community Medical Center in the operating room because everybody else has left the city. The taxes and everything, I don't even have to explain about that. So she bought a new truck, and now she's able to drive back and forth on that issue. But my issue of the hole not being able to drive around my block or do anything, I had, as I said before, this chair was $42,000. I had a piece broke on my chair. It was a month I didn't have my chair, and I go into my driveway, and it scrapes, and it's all just filled up with dirt and garbage. And it just, it's unbelievable to me that when you have head of a department who says, we're going to take care of that, I understand my city councilman saying, oh yeah, we're going to get it taken care of because that's just, you expect it to be taken care of, but it wasn't. And I just don't see any reason why the city hasn't taken care of it. Now, we had, a couple months ago, the city said, oh yeah, we're going to pave your street and do all this, and then it came back to, well, you know, the water company's going to do it. And now it's just on a list. Is it ever going to be done by the water company? The city needs to grade probably four, five inches off the middle of the road because it's just been paved over and over. How are we doing on time?
30 seconds.
30 seconds! So that's my whining again, and it saddens me that this stuff isn't taken care of. And to let you guys know, my son, a Scranton High School graduate, is now a microbiologist. He worked for the VA, and now he's moved to Cleveland to work at the hospital in Cleveland because he's going to get a great job there, and it breaks my heart that my son, my best buddy, Scranton graduate, has left the city, which is another big chunk of tax money that's gone. Same with my daughter. She's got her master's degree. She moved to Mountain Top. And soon enough, there's going to be nobody left in the city but the people that don't contribute to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Rains.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Wolenberg, can you send word down to DPW to request, get an update as to the status of that situation?
Mr. King, if I could just add and just respond quickly to Mr. Rains. So as you mentioned and have been discussed, that American Water did plan on doing a project on that street. When we asked American Water, they said that they weren't quite sure of the date. They were hoping to get it done in the fall, but that was dependent on funds and things outside of our control, but that they would get to it in the spring. If not, and our DPW was not going to, you know, do paving projects on that street if American Water was going to tear it up. But I did ask DPW, I believe I asked twice, if I recall correctly, if there's anything that could be done temporarily to help on the street in the meantime while we're waiting for American Water. But in addition to contacting DPW, if we could also ask American Water now on the plans for that street, if it has in fact been pushed to the spring for that project.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thanks so much.
Can I say one thing about that, too? Those truncated, you have them on the curbs all over. They're there. They're not just there for the color. They're for a person. Now that I'm legally blind, those truncated pads, they lock my chair. I'm able to, when I hit those bumps, I know that I'm getting ready to drive off the curb. And they're just not there for decorations. They're there for an ADA reason, just like we're supposed to have an ADA handicap parking spot out back, which we still do not have one that meets the ADA requirements.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rains. Joan Hodewanis.
I'm going to read a letter that I wrote to the newspaper and was published last Friday. Flood victims deserve a break from government. Editor, my parents' North Scranton home was condemned in November 1963 due to a mine subsidence. Homeless for the next seven months, we experienced extreme financial hardship. And even though our home was uninhabitable and beyond repair, we had to pay property taxes until the government bought us out in 1968. Homeowners who were devastated by the flooding on September 9th should not have to go through what we did. County, municipal, and school district taxing authorities should exempt them from property taxes for as long as their homes are uninhabitable or until they are bought out. If they already paid the tax for 2023, they should receive a prorated rebate. Some will ask, why should we give these people a break on their taxes? Shouldn't their insurance policies cover their losses? Not likely. Most insurance companies do everything they can to avoid paying a claim. Keep in mind that this flooding might have been avoided, or at least greatly reduced, if we had effective stormwater management. But we don't, and that is a subject for another day. Yes, we will lose some tax revenue, but only a pittance compared to the millions that are collected each year. But beyond that, there is one fundamental reason why we should give these homeowners a tax break. It is the right thing to do, and we all know it. Now, I'll be reading this letter tomorrow to the county commissioners at their meeting. I don't have an opportunity to go to the school district meetings, but I hope that all the taxing authorities do opt in to give these homeowners a break. Unless you've been in our shoes and lost a home, you have no idea how much money it's going to cost, okay? Your first duty, your fiduciary responsibility to the citizens and taxpayers is to take care of them when they're in times of distress, and this is one of them. And I hope this makes clear that you need to make stormwater management a priority. Yes, it's nice to have pools and parks and all the other good things of life, but stormwater management is essential. And when do you have effective stormwater management? When nobody gets flooded out. Moving on, I'm looking forward to seeing sometime in the near future the legislation to restore the funds that we dedicated, 3.79 million for those court awards. So I hope that's going to come out in the next few weeks. The firefighter's contract, it's been 182 days. We're well past 120 days it was supposed to take to get it on the city's website. We need to see that contract. Any update on the audit?
Not at this time.
You want me to go over there and light a fire under the sewer authority? I'll do it. You know the sewer authority. You remember them. That's the authority that would not die.
They're the ones that are holding it up, I believe, Joan.
And just one other thing. I saw in the paper the story about taxes and preview, that we had one proposal from Rudolph Clark LLC. Well, I didn't see anything in as about the cost of what they were going to ask for for this. Is this going to be coming down in legislation in the next couple weeks?
I would expect so.
Okay. And can we assume that two weeks from now we'll have a draft operational budget for 2024?
I would expect that.
Okay. Thank you. You all have a good night.
You, too. Thank you, Ms. Hodewanis.
Marie Schumacher.
Mr. Solicitor Gallagher, can we take a look at, since council is the taxing body of the city, could you look into the legality of tax relief for the affected residents?
Sure.
Thank you.
It'll be shorter because my first one was about the pump at Mayor Field, and the next one was about buyouts. And now even, I wanted to know the status of notifying the property tax exempted property owners. Are they expected to provide a payment to compensate the city for all or some of the lost property tax? Has everybody received a letter in that regard?
I have all of the tax exempted properties received. I believe that the administration sent those out. And once again, they put out the RFP to do the HUP test, and there was one, finally we got somebody to respond. So if, as long as the price is, you know, within the range and they're a reputable company, we're probably going to go after that as well.
Yeah, I saw that in the paper today, so, yeah. That's my next question is, on what basis was it decided to put that out for contract instead of doing it in-house?
Instead of our own attorneys or solicitors for the city doing the HUP test? I think that they're looking for a company or a law firm that kind of specializes in doing this or has a background in doing, you know, these HUP tests. So, and I think, I believe, speaking on behalf of the city solicitors, I believe that they're, you know, tied up with quite a number of other issues that they're dealing with, and, you know, we want to have someone that can really focus on getting this job done, this special program.
I just thought getting the letter out would be a good start, but... Next, I just wanted to say that I was happy that you tabled the purchase of the building next door last week because I've noticed over my many years on this earth that if there's somehow, if there's a lot of room, it will be filled, and I don't want to see this city grow with a lot of employees. I want to see something for the citizens. And then, oh, again, this was sort of answered, as happened in the past years, the next year's budget is expected prior to the required 15th of November. And is that, that is true, right?
I expect they're going to absolutely meet those timelines.
Okay. And then finally, what is the city's debris? I keep seeing RFPs in the legal notices for the city's, yeah, their debris removal.
So I would imagine, and I can't, I don't know what one you're specifically speaking about, but in 2018, we had some water issues with that big storm in August, and there were, I think, 49 projects that FEMA or PEMA were going to reimburse. I only know of three maybe that were done out of those, say, 49. And you would have seen in the last three weeks, there was two pieces that we passed. That was debris removal out of some of the Kaiser Valley creeks. That was projects that should have been done from the 2018 storm.
Okay.
So I would imagine that that's what, that's in regard to.
That's what it is. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Schumacher. Virgil Argenta.
Thanks, Mr. McAndrew, about the Italian American flag. It's Italian American Month. Will there be an Italian flag flying at City Hall? If so, when can we expect to see it flying? I've asked for weeks, including filing a right to know for a listing of city-owned take-home vehicles and by who. Simple question, you would think, considering I'm a citizen of Scranton, a taxpayer, a businessman, and all my taxes are paid. I believe city vehicles belong to the taxpayers. I was refused by the city RTK office, so I filed an appeal with Harrisburg. The fire department, the police department, DPW, and code enforcement responded with reasons why to withhold the info. I find it very alarming that the city agencies will label a city doxer for a mere fact that he or she is concerned with city government after having firsthand knowledge that a certain city director was pulled over and cited by the Pennsylvania State Police for driving what is suspended and/or revoked license. I was concerned, as you all should be, in the event this person has a city take-home vehicle and is involved in an accident while driving a city vehicle, taking the kids to school. It's a liability that the city certainly doesn't need. What is the city hiding, and who is using city vehicles after hours that's so secretive? I'd read the affidavits, but I'll get them to you guys. Every affidavit is the same. So how are we making out on a Sorenti Center? How's it coming along? Did we ever put the electric charging stations in there? And when will the public be able to tour the facility? How come the dumpster at police headquarters hasn't been dumped in weeks? Chris Smith and Scott Petroface had the laborers removing bags by hand from the dumpsters the last couple days. Is that a violation of the union? Do you know that DPW Director Scott Petroface is so overworked that they hired him an assistant last week? The poor guy. Well, we stayed tuned and were waiting. Do we know what the vetting process is yet for Weston Field, for the homeless hotel? Do we have an answer on the vetting process yet? Well, the mayor's here tonight. Can we ask the mayor? Would the mayor be able to answer that question for us? What the vetting process is?
I don't know that there's a vetting process.
Excuse me?
Anyone who's a citizen of the city of Scranton is allowed to enter there. I don't think we can screen.
So they're citizens. Do they have addresses, Mr. King? Do they have addresses?
I don't know what their addresses are.
A city resident would have an address for the city, correct?
Well, we don't.
And the CIT Center where 95 voters are registered to vote isn't an address, isn't an address to live there. And if the CIT Center on Fifth and Linden, then let's have it inspected and see if it's up to capacity. There's 95 residents in 14-1 that are registered to vote. How is that possible? Answer that, Mr. King. If a young girl was raped or a woman was raped, do we know who those people are, who those homeless people are? Do you know who's in our town? Neither do I. Terrible, terrible representation. But you had a pep rally the other night for two hours bragging about you being an altar boy, and you were this and you were that. Nobody cares what you did 50 years ago. Let's talk about what you did on the Scranton School District and how many lawsuits do you have with the Scranton School District, and how many millions of dollars? Do you want to continue? Let's get the real facts out there. Help these people that were flooded. You got $70 million of ARPA money. You buy them out, and you wait for the money from PEMA and FEMA. How about we do that? You buy them out as the city, sit up there and make ordinance that count for people instead of worrying about who's parking in a parking spot and who's got an overgrown tree. Do what you're supposed to do. Represent, make ordinance, you're the legislative body. Stop the mayor's crazy spending and this crazy tactics. You put her in her place. Have a good night.
Have a great night, Mr. Argenta. Len Srebro.
Lenny Srebro, flood victim, Kaiser Valley. First, I really want to thank the DPW workers that have come out, the way they were handling, you know, all the debris, you know, all kinds of scum and mud and everything falling from giant... giant pieces of furniture that they had to pick up and throw in the dumpsters. I really want to thank those guys. Now, last week, I heard the fire chief saying that the pump was running. No, it wasn't. I was there. I lived there. I'm at the corner of Lafayette and North Merrifield and I kept driving around the city or the neighborhood checking on the damage. And so many times I went by that pump house, that pump house was not working. You know, I don't know if the fire chief made a mistake or was saying that the pumps were running. Yeah, the portable pumps that they brought in after the regular pump failed. At that pump station, I don't get it. There's a green light that flashes on that building. You know, to me, just common sense, that green light would tell you that the pump is working. But I was there when the pump was down and they were fixing it and the green light was flashing. Like, shouldn't it be a red light flashing? That's what a lot of people, including myself, heard, "The pump house is working, no problem. The light is flashing green." I can't understand who put that idea to work. The way also, it was said that there was a meeting for the study on the stormwater management at the Kaiser Valley Community Center, you know, within the last two years. There was never a meeting there. Me and the neighbors wouldn't know if there was ever a meeting. So I don't know what's going on there with that meeting. You know, but there should be a meeting at the Kaiser Valley Community Center for the residents in that area to know what's going on. Somebody should just look into that to, once in a while, have a meeting right there at the, with the neighbors to know what's being done. You know, everything we're being told, what's being taken care of or the process, you know what, you'll have to forgive me, but for my experience coming here, 10 years, I'll believe it when I see it. In the meantime, I don't believe anything you guys are telling us because, you know, all the time, "Oh, we're looking into it, we're getting permits, but it's going to take a long time." Even this study that's going on, it says in it, "The next stage is the design." How long is the design going to take now? Couple of years before any kind, anything really gets done? You know, I must have talked to five different people requesting sandbags at the time of the storm and still following up on it. Nobody will give me sandbags. I could prevent a couple of houses from filling up with water if I have, I requested five to seven sandbags that I would put on my corner lot that would direct the water a different way, that would save my next-door neighbor's basement from flooding. Nobody comes with a sandbag. Right now, we're facing a real problem with mosquitoes. It's unbelievable. The whole neighborhood, at least one square block, is filled with millions of mosquitoes, not millions, all right, but lots and lots of mosquitoes that are flying around day and night, all these wet water-laying places, you know, mosquitoes are hatching like crazy. One more thing, I would like to know what chemicals, what diseases were in all of those floodwaters. Who knows what the heck was mixed in there? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Srebro. Gene Besko.
Good evening, council. The gallery behind me is made up mostly of Kaiser Valley residents who live in the flood-prone areas. These people have been putting up with flooding for their property for years. This past flood was so bad that some residents had to be taken out by boat. Enough is enough. Through the years, we've approached council, City Hall, and City Hall about the flooding. Since 2007, I personally have spoken to City Hall, the city engineer, and been before this council three times. The flooding issue still continues and nothing is being done. Why? One of the issues that needs to be addressed for the fourth time is the reconnection of a 24-inch pipe that used to go from a retention pond on the west side of Kaiser Avenue directly to Kaiser Creek. This is where all the runoff from Newton Road and Fawnwood comes down the mountain and is dumped into that. In 2006, the lot on the corner of Brick Street and North Cameron was bulldozed for a new home. In doing so, they bulldozed over a manhole on the 24-inch pipe going through the property. In 2007, the sewer authority, instead of fixing the pipe, directed all the water from the 24-inch pipe onto Brick Street. Every time it rains, that 24-inch pipe dumps 187,000 gallons of water per minute. That is basically the equivalent of four 15-foot round swimming pools being dumped onto Brick Street every minute. All that water goes down Brick Street and it actually hits through the alley, goes down Merrifield Avenue, Dewey Avenue, down to the pump station. How much water can that pump station take? They actually turn into a river. The DPW and city flood control personnel have been doing a great job cleaning the storm drains and trying to maintain the pump station, but it's only putting a Band-Aid on it. The next big issue is the pump station on North Merrifield. We've been told for over 30, closer to at least 35 years, that the pump station is inadequate and needs to be upgraded, but nothing has ever been done to upgrade it. Why? GPI Incorporated did a study of the flooding problems in Kaiser Valley in 2021. I actually accompanied the people while they were doing the study. This was within the vicinity of Merrifield Avenue and Brick Street. The report was finished in September 24th of 2021. In two years, we have not heard one word about the results of the study. After 30 years of being ignored, the people of Kaiser Valley want to see corrective action taken sooner rather than later. I suggest that when the city does a study, once the city has analyzed the results and implemented a plan of doing it, that there should be a meeting with all the people involved so that the people know what is going on instead of being left in the dark. We have several people here who live in the vicinity of Lindy Creek and Frank Street. Some of their properties had extensive damage also. I am not too familiar with the cause of the flooding in that area, but the development of new homes, a new turnpike entrance, and clear cutting of the power line up there are more than likely contributing to the facting of that flooding. Thank you very much for your concern.
Thank you, Mr. Besko. Gene Romaldini.
Thank you, council. Gene Romaldini, I live on Merrifield Avenue. I'm actually Lenny's neighbor. So we're looking for the sandbags to stop the water from going into my basement. Couple things I wanted to talk about, and it's, I'm going to reiterate a couple of things that Gene said. The first, one of the first problems you have is that 24-inch line that needs to be reconnected. Because it's at a higher elevation, if that water, if that line is not reconnected, the pump house doesn't mean anything. Because you got, you have to divert that water that is coming out of Brick Street that just blows out of the catch basin, runs down our street like a river. It literally is like a river. If you stand in that water, you will get swept into the, into the wa, into the street. That's how strong it is. So the first thing that needs to be addressed is that, is that line. That would be the first thing. That's my recommendation. The pump house, based on GPI's study, is about, in today's dollars, probably $4 million worth of work. So there's quite a bit of work there. The other question, one of the questions I have is, based on what the mayor had mentioned about the drawings being in design, there's quite a bit of approval processes, like MPDS and county approvals and state approvals, based, based on that design. Like, do we have a schedule when that design would be completed? We have like a, an end date? Like, is it the spring of 2024? Because if this event happens again, it doesn't, the design doesn't mean anything. We have, we have to get the construction started because that construction may take a year or two. So that's, that's some of the issues that we have here. And one thing I do want to say, you know, DPW and the first responders did a great job that night. You know, the police were there, you know, but the real heroes of this event are these people here. These people are the heroes because they had to live through it. They had to be pulled out of their homes. They had to walk through the water and the mud. Elaine Alaguchi, my next-door neighbor, God bless her, she walked down the street in the floodwaters to pull someone out of their car. She had to break the window on, on his car because it was, the water was probably four feet high, and she dragged them out of his car and saved them. I told her to wait for me, but she wouldn't wait for me because I wanted to put my shoes on. I was walking around on my bare feet. So, you know, these people that have been displaced from their homes are the heroes here. And I really feel bad because we're still in our home. You know, we had, we have some flooding in our basement, but it's these folks here that, that are dealing with it the most. So, you know, that's all I have to say. I'd like to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romaldini. Mr. Boldenberg.
Mr. Boldenberg, can you contact, I don't know, I guess maybe the city engineers or DPW to find out about that 24-inch pipe and see what the situation is as to why, you know? I will, sir. I mean, these are two people now that seem to have intimate knowledge that something was, you know, disconnected or re-rected somewhere and it's obvious it's causing issues. So if we could try to get an answer on that, I'd appreciate it. I will. On Brick Street. Thank you, Frank.
Jim Rupp.
Thank you, council. I'm here with the rest of the valley. I'm representing my mom. She's 87 years old. She's living the house that she has right now, since she was a kid, almost 93 years. Somebody stopped by today from FEMA and said, "We can give you a loan for 7% to help you take care of your property." All right? Now, my mom parallels Lindy Crick. It kicks out at Frank Street every time there's a heavy rain. Lindy Crick is responsible for the city. They do a very nice job cleaning the, cleaning the crick. My compliments to the mayor for taking my calls and giving me contact with the engineer. Again, I want to compliment the DPW at the same time. But the Lindy Crick issue, which is, I'm on the other side of Kaiser Crick, the water comes down there, kicks out at the same spot every time there's a heavy rain. It's been going on before you guys were even on council. All right, that's how long it's been happening. The crick has to be dredged. I don't know how it has to be done. Yes, I know there's a lot of government agencies involved. You can't do this, you can't do that. Somebody has to cut the red tape, boys. This is ridiculous. My mom can't handle another one. All right? They're going to raise her taxes now because the county just did a reassessment. She can't, she won't be able to pay the taxes. I would like to have tax relief for my mom. That would be wonderful. But the Lindy Crick issue needs to be addressed. All right? The valley is getting hit both sides. In regards to the Merrifield Avenue pump station, the station's been promised, I don't know, probably 10 times that I know of. Everybody wants to say, yes, this, that, and next thing. It has to be elevated at least two stories. The young lady mentioned about a pressure transducer. All right? The transducer is subject to power surges and lightning. All right? It's, it's, it's just how the electronic equipment is. All right? The pumps, you need an emergency generator there, you need a new electric service. Can't say, okay, the service tripped out because it's underground. Well, guys, every time it plays floods, the water service, the electric service is underground. All right? There are issues with the pump station. It's happened for years. It has to be repaired. I don't know what red tape we have to cut, but sooner or later, we have to get through all these government agencies in order to take care of the people of the valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rupp. Lee Morgan. Lee Morgan.
Good evening, council. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here today is that, you know, I respect all these residents, but honestly, they've elected one failed group of leadership after another, going all, all the way back. And the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority is a nail in our coffin. All the money was squandered. It was a combined system. We had a corrupt mayor, was prosecuted. And I'd just like to say that all our, all our lives here in the city, we've been lied to and we've elected people that have an inability to lead. And it's to our own detriment. The city really has to, the residents have to realize that they have to rewrite the charter. I think that's one of the reasons why I had to file a federal lawsuit against the city, the mayor, and ECTV today in federal court because it was the only way to get the mayor to come out of the hole she's hiding in her office because we've locked, we've locked the residents out of their own city hall. We have a council that answers to no one, that's going to create more authorities. We don't need a store, another stormwater authority. We don't need any of that. We need to elect people that can run a city and we just don't have it. We don't even get responses from our own government. It's like, it's like we're serfs in our own city. I mean, it's, you know, after, the city was founded in 1866 and do you mean to tell me from then until now, we can't collect garbage and we can't manage stormwater? I watched all the grant money we're talking about spending here now in a country that's becoming a third-world country. Bankrupt, $33 trillion worth of debt, more than the gross domestic product of the country. Children, uneducated. In some places in our country, none of the people have above a third-grade education. It's not in little places, it's across the whole country. And we have make-believe leaders like the ones we have here today. You know, talking about stormwater is really ridiculous. It should have been solved a long time ago and it wasn't. This council voted to sell the Scranton Sewer Authority and then allowed all the money to be squandered and took the reserve and threw it into the property before Pennsylvania American Water took it. You just have no answers. And now the city's spending money it doesn't have again. And you know, when you talk about distress, we were in distress for 30 years. We had Mayor Chris Doherty bankrupt the city. And the sad part is that city employees and school district employees put up signs for failed candidates who can't lead. We talk about spaghetti dinners, we're going to hug and kiss everybody. We're going to hug and kiss everybody. But the residents, look, we need to get rid of the 2.4% wage tax. We need to cut spending. We need to redirect the city, and not with another make-believe business incubator, and passing around millions of dollars of federal funds, and moving money through nonprofits. It's a disgrace what's happened to our country. All these residents here today allowed it to happen. They voted for failed candidates. And I don't know how many of you know that the state of Pennsylvania is removing small dams everywhere. So, everything that was mitigating streams and runoff and water, it's being erased. So, when you have flooding, it's only going to get worse, because we have a failed government. We look to Democrats and Republicans, and they don't have any answers, because they don't serve us. They serve somebody else. And if you can't, if the people in this room can't see that, I can't make them see it. I mean, to talk about trying to talk to the mayor, I called her office numerous times, got no response. I petitioned this council and this mayor to look into the management of ECTV. I asked this council, "How was ETC, ECTV's board appointed?" Nobody knew, because this is just a monstrous machine, completely out of control. Nobody knows anything. No resident of this country should have to do a right to know, to know anything that's going on in this country. The information should be on a laptop. You should pop it open, and as a citizen, you should know anything you want to know about your country. But we've been turned into beggars in our own country, and we've allowed 10 million, that's what the number is now, 10 million illegal people to cross our border, all living off the taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Bob Bowles.
Evening, counsel. Bob Bowles, Scranton. It's an interesting night here tonight. A lot of these people that are here shouldn't have to be here. Because if we took care of this problem, under the Gahan administration and the other administrations that sat here, they wouldn't be here tonight. They wouldn't have had this problem. We pushed the peas around and around and around. And that's the problem we've had here under leadership. And I hate to have to come here and even open my mouth about something, but being born and raised here, running companies here, I've been all over the world. I just came back from Florida after three weeks, helping something going on down there. I turned around, and we donated, and this one was Child Hunger Outreach here in Scranton. It was done between President Trump and myself. We donated disinfectant wipes to the tune of $150,000. We didn't ask for credit for it. I've turned around with my fellow Masons. They reached out, and we talked about it. We donated two trailers. One went to Clark Summit. That's at the, uh, uh, let me see here. It's the number four firehouse up there in Clark Summit. People are taking the wipes. We donated another trailer here in Weston Fields, so our people here could go get free wipes, disinfectant wipes. An individual, our Jenna told me today, that somebody from the city said they can't have them because they're out of date. Well, these are sealed containers. They're as effective as anything else. I'm sure the doctor could tell you, well, disinfectant wipes, because I'm sure she uses them every day in their practice. The bottom line, the people in this city are being denied because some idiot made the statement, "You can't have them because they're out of date." Those wipes are as effective a year from today. They're sealed containers. And he blamed the mayor. And I talked to the mayor before, and she said she had absolutely no idea about it. That's the last thing she would do, is deny these people free disinfectant wipes, instead of them going to Walmart or anywhere else and having to buy them and pay out of pocket. And it's a shame that we have idiots like that in this city. They're incompetent, and they should be fired, without even a hesitation, for denying you people the right to have free disinfectant wipes, to take care of the bacteria and the germs that are in there. And we know the germs are there, because we saw an individual in Clark Summit who died from an infection from the water when they were trapped there. So, those are the things that are there. We had a person who wrote an article in the Scranton Times about me going after Bill Gahan. Well, I haven't seen him or Bill Gahan digging their pockets like we have done to turn around and help them. And he criticized my one dinner once a year. Well, it takes months to put that dinner away, and this will be the 30th year on Christmas Day. And I'm proud to say, I'm a Scrantonian, and we're doing stuff here. Not like the idiot that's running the country, that's destroying it and using us like ponds. So, we got to make changes. There's Naog Park. We could have did a gun eye test and found out where the leak was, instead of making it a mud pond. Happened on Gahan's watch. We had so many different things that happened here, and there's the federal lawsuit, and I'm going to say something real quick about it. The reason I have it is the First Amendment right. It applies to everybody here. What we say, we're governed. What you say is governed by the rules of council. Bill Gahan violated them. And he did it, and it was here in defense of Jessica, thinking that I had something here. And I just want to make it very clear. Nothing I said during that time was outside my First Amendment protections. It was never a hate speech or any kind prohibited speech. My comments to Jessica were taken out of context by Gahan, so that he could further his political ambition. I don't feel, liberals don't like civil disclosures, and they try to twist this agreement and different ideologies into personal attacks. What I said in no way was intended as an insult to Jessica or anyone else. I have that right to speak out, just like we're speaking out to here. Gahan saw an opportunity. That's why he's in a federal lawsuit with me for violating the rules of council that you implore and imply that protect us, as you were protected from us, to you making statements.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
What I want you to do is, the mayor is here, and mayor, I would like if you would find out who the individual was that said, "These people cannot have the disinfectant wipes out of that trailer. They're free. They're from myself and the rest of my fellow Masons, that we're doing this as a charitable to this community." To find out who it was and fire them, and open that trailer up and give these people these disinfectant wipes to clear up any of the bacteria, the germs, instead of them spending out of pocket to buy it.
Sorry, Mr. Bowles. Your time is up.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you. Alex Lortor.
Hello, my name's Alex Lortor. I've been communicating with you, um, some time via email regarding some stormwater issues on the 3,000 block of Lafayette Street, uh, which has not been shown to me to not be a public street. There's, I did some forensic investigation to, um, backfilling the washout, uh, again, for two years. I've been maintaining that section of Lafayette Street, uh, where it meets Newton Road. It can just contributing to the stormwater issues, because I use 2A gravel, which is stone dust and 2-inch gravel, to compact by hand, with a hand tamper, um, that section of street, and it washes out. And I can see, when it washes out, the municipal pave jobs, like, uh, like archaeology, of a subsurface, another pave job, another pave job, and another pave job, uh, where the city had previously paved the road and had accepted it as a city street. My 90-year-old neighbor, Joe Smith, I don't speak for him, but he's in 239 Newton Road. If you'd like to speak to him, he's home, um, all the time. He, he remembers his oral history, where there was a lawn sign and a salt, uh, sorry, a street sign and a salt box that was maintained by the city. The, the street sign fell over when a PennDOT plow hit it. He has it in his garage. I should have brought it today. Um, but, and I know in 1958, there was a vacation, uh, vacating of Lafayette Street where the turnpike is, above me. But my section of street was never vacated by this, by the city. And I, I feel that, um, after thousands and thousands of dollars and hard sweat and back pain of maintaining that section of street, and the stone washing into the stormwater system below me, uh, it ought to be maintained by the city. I'd ask you to pave it. This weekend, I put six tons by hand of 4-inch stone into the washout to try to maintain it. And I hope that that, uh, there's a ballast for, for the wa, the water that will be coming off West Mountain. The water coming off West Mountain is, is contributing, is contributed by the turnpike. Uh, you have not just the cit, the agencies that were discussed earlier, you have the Turnpike Commission and PennDOT that can pony up some money to help us. Uh, PennDOT maintains Newton Road. There is a surface drainage of Newton Road. Uh, the drain boxes are a joke on Newton Road. You can see the church on the corner wash, they washed out. Um, they need to reassess the, the diameter of pipe and the number of drain boxes going, going all the way up Newton Road towards Fawnwood. I think that that would alleviate a lot of what's happening and coming down into the valley. I also think the turnpike, where the rockslide was, right next to me, uh, Newton Road, uh, that's turnpike outflow. That's surface water for probably a mile, mile and a half of the turnpike drains into this outflow and down the mountain where the rockslide was. And I think it connects to that vacated 24-inch pipe. I, I, I'm not an engineer. But the, the Turnpike Commission should be in, in charge of maintaining their own stormwater, and I think it could be redirected. Um, there's a 30-acre parcel. I, I love the guy who bought it. He made some nice four-wheeler trails in there that I enjoy, um, where the turnpike outflow is. But maybe a basin like on Frank Street could be installed there to help slow the water. The goal, it should be slow the water down and, and, and hold it and let it trickle out of a retention basin. The last thing, and my other hat, I'm a union representative for the Geisinger, uh, RNs and Allied Professionals. Um, our, our effort to install security cameras in Naog has kind of stalled with the IT department. The Geisinger employees in Danville had a tragedy where a woman was, was, um, there was homicide by, by her ex-boyfriend. And our, and, and predominantly younger women who park in the back of Naog Lot walk out in the dark. They walk out, um, not knowing who will be standing there. And there's no cameras or, or security footage to monitor that lot. I would propose, uh, that, that Geisinger pay for those cameras, and Geisinger pay for the pool, if they want, in the Hill Section. Um, they're just, if you look at their last bond statement, if you do approach them, uh, in December, it was $13.87 billion of liquid cash and assets is what they have on hand, which is why Kaiser Permanente is buying them. It's because they're so profitable, a company from 2,000 miles away is buying up the hospital system. So, as far as maintenance of, of the Hill Section, the security cameras, and the Naog pool, take a look at, at what Geisinger has to offer. If they need a favor from you on zoning or anything like that, you can't make it transactional. But the community benefits agreement, what I think is called for on that side of the city. Um, but please help me pave Lafayette Street. I'm going to put the sign out, um, that I ordered to replace it, and, uh, you'll see me with the sign on Newton Road until it gets fixed. I'm going to put it out on a sandwich board, uh, tomorrow. So, please help me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lortor. Mr. Goldenberg, I know that we've been, you know, back and forth with the city on that, that issue. Um, can we try to get some answers for Mr. Lortor on that?
Yeah, I'll follow up with them again tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mr. Goldenberg, do we know if that piece of the street has been vacated? So, I, I did follow the email chain going back and forth, and it seemed like...
No record of vacation on that block.
Say that one more time?
No record of a vacation.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, Rick Little.
Hi. People have to pay attention to the, the details of how things are. It seems like everything's, uh, across the board. It's just waiting for the crisis to act. Now, we got all these lanternflies, and, you know, I try, I've been trying to kill them, to save, and as many other people probably have, you, you run up to them, and then they fly. And, uh, you just have to, to fit, put your mind into the mind of the lanternfly. They use their whole, they, you're going to get them, and stamp, and they fly about three, four, or seven feet. They're thinking about flying when they fly. Yesterday, I, in a half an hour, I killed 100 lanternflies right on the side of the, uh, Times Tribune Court Building on Biden Street. How did I do it? I put my mind into the mind of the lanternfly. They can't be that smart. They're, they're jumping, and they're flying. The way I get them, when they jump and they land, you stamp on them within one second of when they land. And I, I think, uh, paying attention to details is, is what the problem is across the board. And everything I, I, I see here, uh, there, there has to be a record when people do stuff. And I'm talking about, uh, well, I'm talking about, you know, my evictions, my many evictions, and I'm finding out all these people, you know, are, are, are district attorneys, and, uh, and what is, what is a district attorney? The head of Scranton Housing Authority, and, and the prosecutor is Scranton Housing Authority. I mean, they're, they're lawyers, but they're district attorneys. But in, in my paying attention to the details of what's happening in the overall picture, uh, that, uh, there, there's an influx that I noticed during, during, uh, you know, the whole George Floyd thing and everything, where, where, uh, outside sources were funding district attorneys, getting district attorneys on school boards. And these, you know, you're scared of district attorneys. They're like powerful people. I mean, they're, they're indicting President Trump in New York. I, I, I've had much correspondence with Letitia James, the, uh, the, um, the Attorney General. And I, I've been in front of, litigated in front of at least 50 judges in New York, and it's a thick system. You know, the family courts are lawless courts everywhere. They're, they're lawless here. We saw what would happen with, uh, you know, Civerella and, you know, making his money, putting him in, in, in prison. I went through 15 years in the family courts, did a lot of court watching, did a lot of organizing to, to understand how this is working. And this is coming from the top down. And, uh, the funding for, for the lawyers that do the work, well, they start funding the lawyer for your child, attorney for the child. $65.6 million a year in, to Kings County Attorney for the child. This is how it works. And, because people are scared of the law. They're scared of, of being evicted. And that's all they do in my building. You know, "Don't do this. You're going to be evicted. We, we don't need permission to come through your door." You know? And it's clearly against the record, but no one has the record. There is zero record of the eviction cases between SHA and Judge, uh, Farrell, the magistrate court judge. I've been down there. There's nothing. There's nothing. There's no record. So, I can't talk about things intelligently.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Tom Durden.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? First off, I want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to be able to come down here and, and express some of our concerns and some of the issues that have been going on inside of the community here. Um, and I do want to apologize to the mayor. I know sometimes you get caught in some very bad situations. And I do want to apologize to the mayor. I know sometimes you get caught in some very bad situations. That was before your time, just like the council here. I graduated, I've spent my entire life, I'm 38 years old. Mr. King, you were the principal there when I went to West Grand High School. I graduated in all four. My wife sits in the back row. We met at the high school. We've been involved in this community our whole lives. We had a chance to go somewhere else. We had a chance to pick up and move. We wanted to still our family here. We walked into Kaiser Valley eight years ago. I have a three-year-old ball of energy who's 11 now. His name is Tyler. They welcomed us with open arms. Anytime they ever needed anything, or we needed anything, we could rely on each other. And I saw that during the flood. I saw neighbors come out into the streets, getting carried down by water to try and help somebody else. My neighbor and myself went in there with water up to our shoulders, looking to see if there was somebody inside of a vehicle. When disaster hits, people come together. And unfortunately, it took some kind of disaster like this for the Kaiser Valley to stand up. I stood in silence and I watched as flood after flood after flood took over the city, or the street, I should say, continually, not worried about it because it didn't affect me. I didn't worry about it because my house was safe. Now, I'm not safe anymore. I had to tell my kid about the idea that people have to sell their houses because FEMA is going to come. I had to tell that to him while we drove to school, while he wiped away tears from both of our eyes. He wants to live in the city. He wants to grow up and be an invader. And I don't want to take that away from him. And I don't want you guys to take that away from him. But what me and my community need is somebody who's going to be responsible. We need a council that's going to stand up and say, this is the last time we're going to have someone come up and speak like this. We need a mayor that's going to work with the council. And I know you're working on it. But I can't have it for the next 10, 15 years. We can't worry about hitting $23 million for FEMA. I can't watch the ball get punted anymore. We need answers. And if it's a 24-inch pipe that's going to inconvenience one family so that these people don't have to be inconvenienced anymore, then open it. If it was something that was done before with a backdoor deal that was shaking hands with a company from Water and a mayor from before or a city council before, we don't care about that. We want accountability. We want to know who's going to be in charge of this. We want someone that's going to be a point of contact. And we want to be included in it because this is not just about me. It's not just about these people. It's about the 11-year-old boy that's sitting in the back. It's about the other people with their grandchildren and their families that are misplaced. I don't want to show too much emotion, and I'm sorry, but when you see your neighbor getting dragged out of their house, crying and trying to grab onto every little thing that they can because there's a boat. And if they don't take this boat, they're not going to get help again. You start to understand what serious issues are in this city and in this world. My one neighbor, who's not here right now, was in fishing pants, waiting for the water to go down so that he can go into his house to get his daily medications. I mean, I've watched and I've seen and I've just, it's unbelievable that anybody could allow other people to just sit there and just have to deal with it on a daily basis. I apologize for being silent in a moment when I should have used my voice. And I'm sorry that it took this moment to have to use my voice. But I ask you guys not to sit silently and just watch. Because just as you see these people that are here, more people are affected. And we're lucky. Not one person was harmed in this situation, but one life is too many lives. And if we don't fix it, that's what's going to happen. And if that's what it takes to make this situation get resolved, then maybe we did get the wrong council to be here to represent us. And I hope that's not the case. And I know that you guys care about the city. So please, get a committee, get somebody involved, get a point of contact so we can start getting answers. And we can go to somebody and we can say, hey, what about this, or what about that, or what about a meeting? We want to be involved. But if you shut us out, we can't do anything. I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank you for your concerns. And Mayor Cognetti, I want to thank you for sitting in and listening to this as well. We thank you for all the time and all the stuff that you have done, but we need more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durden. Dave Dobson?
Good evening. David Dobson, resident, taxpayer. Try to do everything you can to expedite for these people. Apparently, they bought their houses years ago, and now somebody's developed. We have an electrical relay station and all kinds of stuff where trees were stripped out. When I was young, I was lucky enough to grow up in the region, in the coal region in central Pennsylvania. And guess what? We had a moat around the entire town. So we didn't have to worry about such things. There was literally a moat of abandoned mine workings. Okay. Last week, I mentioned about the pension plan and certain losses. And it came to my attention that pension plans invest in a basket of stocks. And sometimes, it's the system...
Excuse me. Can we move the conversation in all the way? Thank you. Give Mr. Dobson an opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
It's the system that this basket of stocks, and my question is, are solid stocks and investments raising money that volatile stocks are crashing and burning and then are being subsidized and more or less covered over by the gains in other stocks? So it may even require changes in the American stock market and the way pensions are invested in. And with the swim pools, repair first if possible. There are, I have mentioned before, they inject grout into the Hoover Dam, and it works. So it holds back all that miles of water. So hopefully, we can find a more affordable way to deal with things in the future. And utility bills. Now, I came up with a different term for PUC, perfectly useless corporatist. We should have a class action suit against PA American Water. I mean, they just facilitated a fraud against us. It's unconscionable that your water bill should be $900 a year or more just because of some agency in Harrisburg won't allow it to be priced accordingly. You know, we had 25 years to deal with the different water issues with the river and wastewater and so forth. And once we got to 25 years, it seemed like everyone was interested. All the corporations, they swoop in, oh, we can take care of that for you. Yeah, they're taking care of it for us. Who knows? You know, they're taking real good care of it for us. And by the way, the electric bill, even though I see less on the graph, that's up again. So it's just a point of concern. People only have so much money, and it hurts even more if you're working for it. And finally, I'm not a big fan of the streetscape deal. You know, I just realized today on Wyoming Avenue, within the next three blocks, most of the buildings from 100 to 300 on Wyoming Avenue are tax exempt. We have cathedrals. We have churches. We have the county building. There's several other buildings that are probably tax exempt. And they're paying nothing, and here we go, you know? I expect my wife to survive me. That's where my issue is, too. I wouldn't want to see her lose that house due to high taxation. It's just something to worry about. I might make it a couple of years and maybe I won't. And I'm not looking for pity either because I'm 69 now and I've been through a lot. But, you know, it's just make sure the right people are paying taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Greg Pope?
Thank you to the council members. Am I allowed to approach to show you guys a photograph?
Sure.
Okay. This photograph is showing the flood area. You can see here, this is going down Lafayette Street, it's the 200 of Merrifield Avenue. And I have a couple others. These are the ones, these I took on Jackson Street, looking down into Merrifield. That's Dewey Avenue where there was a lot of flooding. Now, those photos were taken by me in August of 2018. There was a flood there. There was heavy rain. And the entire Kaiser Valley, the lower part of Kaiser Valley, was flooded. The rain was not as hard or as significant as it was on September 9th. But nonetheless, residents had to leave their homes, many of the same ones. The Camaradas, the Douglasses, had to evacuate, and the pump house did nothing. It was not turned on. I'm not an engineer. I don't know why. I don't know what happened, but I do know that the warning signs were there. West Mountain has been increasingly, more and more developed, more and more trees are being removed. That means that there's less woods to catch the rainwater, and it's coming down to us. That whole area, I'm on Cameron Avenue, so I'm about a block up. I was lucky. I only got about a foot of water in my basement, only. But that whole area is basically the bottom of a bowl. And the other side of that bowl is, you know, 10 feet up is built up for the football field. I love the football field. My daughter's a cheerleader over there. So everybody in the neighborhood loves that. But it's basically a giant wall between Kaiser Valley and Kaiser Creek. And some other people here said that that 24-inch line on Briggs Street, getting that hooked back up would do a lot to alleviate that. But the fact of the matter is, the warning signs have been there. This is not the first significant flood that we've had, even just the last half decade. So, again, not an engineer. I'm just here to add my voice to the many, many voices that had more informed things to say, just to say that something needs to be done or that whole area is going to be abandoned. People are just going to leave their homes. And one of the frankly nicest residential areas, I think, in the whole city is going to just become an absolutely underdeveloped, abandoned area. I work for County Dispatch. So, you know, I kind of got my eye in the sky in this whole response. I also want to add my voice to the people who said thank you to the police officers, firefighters, and DPW workers who worked tirelessly in our neighborhood to help that get cleaned out. But again, the problem is not from the bottom up. The problem is from the top down. We need assistance, and we need it badly to alleviate these flooding problems. That's all I have to say. I need to give the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard?
Tom Coymanuka. Wasn't going to talk about this, but I will talk about the water issue right now, just for a brief second. It was said we don't know what to do about the pump house. It gets flooded. Electricity gets cut off for it. We need engineers to figure out a plan on how to fix that. Well, it's been put forward here, elevate the pump house in the first place. The pumps that go in the ground to pump the water out, they're waterproof, they're water sealed. It's just a matter of running a power lines to them and running the piping section up and having pumps that can move that capacity of water uphill a certain number of feet. We've had submarines for how long? They go underwater. Believe it or not, they don't flood. It's possible to make a structure in water that does not flood. Surprisingly enough, electric cables, we've had transatlantic cables running from here to Europe under saltwater. It seems they're operational and have been operational, but we can't figure out how to keep electricity to a building. And we put electric boxes at flood level, below the ground level, rather than the top of the building. I don't quite understand. And what I also don't understand is, when I was in high school, or even as a kid, you'd take a glass, you'd fill it up with water, you'd turn it upside down in the sink, and you'd pump air in there. And what happened? When air got pumped into that structure, it displaced the water. So one of the ways to stop flooding when water is coming up into a pump house is to create negative pressure in there by pumping air into the structure. And air forces the water out of the bottom, no matter how high that water gets. As long as you have an air pump pushing air in to the bottom of that structure, the air will rise up and push the water out. I'm sorry if you can have a four-year-old do that in a kitchen sink, and that's too much of a concept of how to keep a pump house running. But that shouldn't need to take an engineering student to figure that out. Onto my other subjects. It's been stated many times that the mayor has sent out letters to nonprofits, pilots, who have not donated to the city. We've asked if this body can provide a list of those who are mailed and if any response will return. Two weeks ago, that was last year, and I went back. And the last time I asked it before this body and was promised a response as it was forwarded to Mr. Voldenberger from the chair, was 100 days ago. So right now, you have about 114 days that we're still waiting on that response. Do we have a response yet?
I don't believe so. Do we hear anything, Mr. Voldenberger?
Not as yet, Mr. King.
Okay, well, let's make that a priority, see if we can get that list of all the nonprofits that letters were sent out to asking them for, you know, donations to the city in lieu of taxes.
We see in Eighth Order, the question on reporting overtime. It was suddenly put into an executive session. It's been stated they will get back to it because there are questions that needed to be answered in the meeting. It was introduced June 6th of 2023. It's been 120 days since that has been put and side tabled on the back burner. How long till we get an answer, or should we expect it to sit and die on the legislative table at the end of the year? Open burn was on June 13th, and that was the reason for the executive session held. Now that that's been resolved and the case has been resolved, can you bring us on to speed on the agreement and settlement since that case is complete and no longer executive material? The people should know the financial cost for that deal. Last week, after the police chief was here and opened up for questions in Fifth Order, Mr. King noted they had a bunch of questions to be answered by the chief and should have him respond, have him to respond. Chief was here. I don't know why they weren't asked during that meeting while he was right here before the body. And last, in closing, people out there in Scranton, watch over the next week, over the next month or so, elections are coming up. Watch your political body and how they operate and don't operate. Bring that knowledge, judge them, and go to the polling booths based upon what they do or don't do for their community.
Thank you, Mr. Coymanuka. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard? Fifth Order, 5A motions. Mr. Smurl, do you have any motions or comments?
This is a pool meeting with the city and the engineers for Naog complex. Mr. Gattens wasn't able to attend, so I'm going to go up to the Rec Authority meeting... on Thursday to go over some stuff with them. And all my other requests, I have forwarded already to Mr. Voldenberg, so that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smurl. Mr. Schuster?
Yes, I'm first going to start by saying I was happy that the residents of Kaiser Valley came out to speak their mind tonight. It's been something I always recommend city residents to do, is to come out and speak in public comment. I'm willing to hear anything you want to say, whether I agree with it, whether I don't. I sit here and I listen to it all, and I've been doing that for years, so very happy that they came out to, to speak their mind. I know, so let's see, Mr. Voldenberg, last week I asked a few questions, and I didn't see any responses as of yet. I don't know if we received any emails today, I didn't have a chance to check my email, but the University of Scranton rental properties, in accordance with the rental ordinance, did we get any response from the city administration on that one?
I don't believe so. We did receive an email, a lengthy email this afternoon at five-thirty-nine, but we're already in caucus, so I'll review that and get back to you tomorrow.
All right, thank you. I also asked a question about the Complete Streets project. It was the first time I heard this terminology, and I don't, I, my question last week was, is the administration adopting a complete streets policy in Scranton? Didn't we receive a response on that one?
Not as of today.
Thank you. You know, I asked, on our capital budget, we have a couple different projects that are going on downtown that are coming out of the, the walkability study, and in that capital budget, had to be determined cost on it. When I asked some of the questions about the Wyoming Avenue piece and the grant that we just applied for, it came back to me that this was something that we were going to do grant by grant, so we really didn't have a, a plan moving forward, we were just going to do it grant by grant, and that's why I ask about the Complete Streets, if this is something that we're going to do with each and every one of these projects. But just to keep in mind, and when I look at the capital budget and voting on it later tonight, it's going to be something that I keep in my mind, is that to-be-determined cost. We asked about the vouchers for Weston Field several times, and I don't think we, did we ever get a response on the vouchers for Weston Field?
I believe that's in that lengthy email from this afternoon. I'll report back to you.
Thank you. And the lengthy email we got, I guess, at five-something, as we were all en route to council chambers, I guess we received an email. We asked about it for several weeks, and then it wasn't until, I think, last Wednesday that there was a news piece on the news about the Keystone Mission thanking City of Scranton Administration for the vouchers, so I really don't, other than that news piece, that was all I really heard on the vouchers, and was surprised to see it on the news rather than questions we had been asking for quite some time. Another request I'm going to make of you, Frank, is I did get a list of city vehicles. There was a response that came with that, that they cannot give employees' addresses, vehicle numbers, things of this sort. Can we also get a list of, so I, I don't need any identifying information, but can we get a list of city employees that are given a vehicle? Those people that have been assigned vehicles, can, can we get a list of, of those employees' names?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you. We got some, some correspondence about the Scranton Recreational Authority, they've appointed a, a director there. Some questions came, came over from, I, I had some questions on it regarding benefits from the city, and if the authority had, had the power to do such, I, I didn't get a response on that, but I did some, see some correspondence coming back and forth between the city and Controller Murray. And some of the, the concerns that he had are also some concerns that I have. The person who was hired as director isn't a resident of the city, and I, I think we were told, I, I think the answer was that they didn't have to be a, a resident of the city, as they weren't an employee of the city. So I'll be waiting on that answer, if we could reach out with some of those questions that, that he had, that they would parallel my questions. It looks like our benefits are going to be paid by the city, and we're using ARPA as a startup, and then we're going to be reimbursed, so if we could get...
That's correct.
Yeah. If we can get some clarification on, on the responses that he got and that we got, and how, how this position is going to be funded moving forward.
Yeah, I'll follow up with Controller Murray and the administration.
All right, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild?
Okay, I have a few things, but I first wanted to start by thanking the people that came tonight from the Kaiser Valley and those who suffered damage from the storm last month. It's, you know, it's, it's clearly very devastating for many of these people and their properties to have, to have had that, that damage, and for something that has happened in the past with flooding, and the Kaiser Valley being known for having those issues. And I know that this council, as well as, you know, previous councils, I think when, when Councilman Gahan was on here, he had also worked very hard on trying to address the Kaiser Valley stormwater issues, and I know it's unfortunate that more hadn't been done up until this point. It, it is a high priority for the city that we need to fix the issues that are there, but I, I don't think it's as simple as just, you know, fixing one, one pipe. I think, I think it's, it's a combination of issues that, that lead to that water flow, flow being so devastating when it, when it does flood like that, and when there are heavy rainstorms. So I, you know, I want to make sure that this council continues to do what we can. I know we've had votes on this in the past, and on, you know, like the, the design study, and I hope that we, that that gets completed as soon as possible, so that work can begin on, on this issue, and hopefully prevent future damage for people. I know that it's not coming soon enough, and that's, that's really unfortunate, but we're going to continue to, to be here for those people and to do whatever we can on, on council to make that happen. And a couple of notes, there was a question about the mosquitoes down in one section in particular, and the county is addressing that, so they were down there today, they set up traps, and they're going to be back tomorrow to then spray. And with regards to Briggs Street, that, that I just wanted to clarify, that is being addressed within the GPI design, which, you know, can't come soon enough. And there was another matter that I wanted to address that was brought to my attention. There's a, it's separate from, from the flooding issue, there's a property in Hill Section seven-twenty-three Wheeler Avenue, and there have been a number of concerns with this property over time, and I think the, the neighbors are getting to, to their last straw with a number of them. So there, there's garbage issues, there's mattresses constantly being placed on like the side of the house. They think it could be possible boarding house or temporary housing for people. And then there was an incident last week, I'm not really going to go into it, but it was disturbing, I think, for a number of the neighbors. So if we can get code enforcement down there, I know the SPD has been down there previously for parking issues, I'm not sure if there have been other, like nuisance calls or complaints, but if we could take a look into this property and then see what we can, what we can do to address the problems.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And lastly, there was a conversation that I had with someone earlier today, very helpful conversation, and it's someone who uses the handicap placard for their vehicle and is, is disabled, and there seemed to be a number of issues for people who are, who are in that situation, who are, who are disabled, and I know that I've taken the time to address them here on council in the past, but what I wanted to see if we could do moving forward, at least with regards to parking for people within the city, is if we could have a review of our, of our ordinance, because I'm, I'm sure it hasn't been updated in, in quite some time. I want to see if there's any changes that could be made to make it easier for people with that handicapped placard to be able to park within the city, especially if they have, if they're paying for it outside of their homes, there's a couple of concerns there. And also to make sure that it's as enforceable as it can be, so that the SPD can, you know, can, can give tickets where needed when, when someone's parking in those spots who shouldn't be.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Okay, and that question's also geared towards Solicitor Gallagher, if he could help in the, in the review of that ordinance.
We'll pull the ordinance and reach out to the Law Department and SPD tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew?
Yeah, I have a couple. So, as a resident of Scranton and Hales from Westside, I was thrilled to see Kaiser Valley come out. Guess what? They've had enough, and I agree. And me and the mayor, or the mayor and I can disagree or agree to disagree about the pump house. It's failed, it doesn't work. It didn't work two weeks ago, it didn't three weeks ago, so, but a common thread that I've heard from residents up there, and, and it's not just the past week, I've heard this every time it rains, that there's an issue with that pipe or that main. And guess what? So I'm here almost four years, and sometimes the answers we need, or the best ideas, come from the residents, especially them that are most affected. So if this twenty-four-inch pipe, it used to go into fifteen or fifteen into twenty-four, I'm not a plumber, but I've heard it from multiple people. If that's an issue, like we said earlier, we need someone to take a look at that. And I'm told, okay, they've always had issues with water, but ever since the changing or the unhooking of that pipe, the twenty-four and the fifteen, or the fifteen and no longer the twenty-four, like I said, I'm not a plumber, but they seem to know this, and they, they seem to know that ever since that was either messed with or disconnected, or whatever you want, the word you want to use, it's, it's made the issue worse. So I believe them, so we need to look into that.
We'll make it a priority, sir.
And I know there's, there's a big project coming and, and the planning stage and the construction, but we can't wait. We, we can't wait. This is going to happen again, and then, I'm going to be sitting here, how am I supposed to respond to that if we don't do anything? So please send that over. And now Mr. Rains, who is sitting here with his concern, guess what? It's not his third, fourth, or fifth time, it's his umpteenth time he's come to us with that complaint. And we were assured last year, let alone this year before recess, that, yeah, we'll take care of it. DPW said, you know, Mr. Petrofis said he'll take care of it. And this issue predates the discussion of whether it was going to be paved this year or, or on the list or off the list because the water company's so supposed to pave it. That shouldn't be any part of the conversation. This gentleman was promised some type of resolve in front of his house. The poor guy's handicapped, he can't even get in and out with his van, and the issue, his needs are small, and the issue is easily resolved, filling a couple holes, removing some of the stuff that's, that's inhibiting him from using his driveway in the summer and winter. For the love of God, please, let's have this fixed for him. Please follow up with that, I, I know you have, this is, there's many times I've issued this concern to you and you've sent it over, but this is, this is another issue where it's enough.
I will, sir.
And the Scranton Redevelopment Authority move that just recently happened raises an eyebrow. This was a position that has been filled in years. All of a sudden, it's being filled because they lost some traction with the Scranton Housing Authority with appointments or hires, so it raises my eyebrow, especially that we're supposed to fund it and get reimbursed? That's absurd. And, and not consider this person making, I think it's ninety, is it ninety thousand? Going to make ninety thousand dollars, there's no way to fund it, so we're going to fund it, and, and down the road, the Redevelopment Authority is going to reimburse us? And, okay, technically, it's not an employee, but guess what? We're going to provide benefits? So this employee is going to fall under the city benefits plan? Does, does the insurance company know that? Are they aware of that? I don't think so. I don't like it. We had, we posed questions, we didn't get them back, and, and we want these answers. We want to clearly define explanations about how, where, how they're hired, why they're hired, who's paying, why we being reimbursed. This process has never happened before, that I'm aware of, and if it has, I need to see evidence of it. I just think this is some quick move that I don't like. And that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. I too would like to thank all the residents who came out here from Kaiser Valley today. I know many of us here on council visited a lot of those areas that were affected and, and devastated, quite frankly, but when you see the throngs of people that came in here tonight, it gets awfully real, when you see the pain and the suffering that they've had to endure for far too long, so I'm truly hoping that we can get some of these things resolved sooner rather than later. And we do have, you know, studies have been done, and Kaiser Valley studies have been done on East Mountain. I was told today that the work on East Mountain for storm remediation is going to begin in two thousand and twenty-four, and I believe the same is true with, with the Kaiser Valley, so I hope that we can, we can get these issues resolved sooner rather than later. I have some responses for Fifth Order from last week. Council received a request from a resident of West Elm Street, and we forwarded it to DPW for street signs for the intersection of South Main and West Elm Street. Council sent a request to code enforcement requesting revisit a property at sixteen-oh-two South Webster for quality of life issues. Neighbors advised the owners do clean the property after code enforcement notice, but revert right back to the same issues in September. Council received a complaint from a resident of Connell Street regarding a boat and trailer parked on the street for an extended period at six-thirty-two Connell Street. Scranton Police Patrol will investigate and advise. Scranton Police Department ticketed numerous vehicles on a lot, on the lot at eight-nineteen Pittston Avenue and businesses next door in September for parking on the sidewalk. Code enforcement will also be reviewing the entire block for quality of life violations. We forwarded a resident's concern to the Scranton School District regarding Scranton School District-owned overgrown lot at South High Park Avenue. Virgil Argenta, Council President Bill King asked the Law Department of OECD if the council can have an update on the condemned properties as listed below, when the buildings may be scheduled for demolition and awaiting response. Those properties are fifteen-oh-two, fifteen-oh-four Wes Gibson, sixteen-fourteen North Lincoln Ave., the rear of eleven-eleven Blair Avenue, Harrington Place, and the rear of three-forty-five Phelps Street, that's the rear of Scranton Prep Parking Lot. Also, the code enforcement team was asked to visit the court in the rear of fifteen-eighteen Jackson Street near the Family Dollar Store. Property in the court contains quality of life issues that include overgrown trees, brush in addition to trash on the property. Council asked the administration to provide an update on the Weston Field Pool House repairs. We also asked the administration to provide an update on the public safety building Serenti Center. The June twenty-third update provided to council stated, "We're currently completing ARPA-funded HVAC project at Serenti, should be completed later this summer, it's fall now." A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is for the construction of Classroom and Evidence Room. We're currently working through some grant funding logistics and will begin construction after that. Victoria Fotia, council requested September twenty-seventh that our DPW review and update the turning lane and crosswalk markings at the intersection of South Washington Avenue and Hickory Street. Marie Schumacher, I believe Marie was here for the last meeting, but council sent a request to the administration for the listing of pilot payments to date, in addition to the date correspondence were mailed to not-for-profit entities. Administration responded by stating they are compiling the information, will forward the information to council. Council asked for an update and schedule related to East Mountain Stormwater Project. Administration responded to East Mountain Stormwater update, there's going to be an update on October twenty-fifth at the Howard Gardner School. And also sent a request to DPW management to revisit repairs at the lookout on Route three-oh-seven. DPW has placed that on their work list and will be addressed. Earlier this evening, an individual made some comments attacking me for whatever. All I could tell you is that I'll take my record of community service, I'll take my record as the former superintendent of the Scranton School District, having, you know, been involved in building three brand-new schools, including Woodyer addition at Lincoln Jackson, and renovating the other half of Lincoln Jackson, building new Isaac Trip Elementary School, putting five roofs on various buildings in the district. Seventeen out of eighteen of our schools met adequate yearly progress in, in the years eleven, twelve. We started a number of curricular programs that were beneficial, and we had three and four-year-old preschool at the time, and our budget was balanced when I was there. So I'll match... So I'll match all of the contributions I've made to the city, including what's happening this weekend with the Steamtown Marathon, which I started over 26 years ago and has raised $2.3 million for St. Joseph's Center and has benefited Scranton to well over the $220 million over that time with money coming in from outside the city. So I'll match my record over that gentleman's record any day of the week. Thank you.
5B?
Sorry, Mr. Volenberg. President King, can I just add two things to our request from Mr. Volenberg?
Sure.
We talked about that 24-inch pipe. Can we also add to that request about the pipe if the city has ever checked the reservoirs above Newton Road? I did bring the mayor and her flood control group up there, I'd say probably three to four years ago, to take a look at those reservoirs, if the city's ever checked those reservoirs, and then if they've ever reached out to the Turnpike Commission? And then for our SRA request, if we could also request the resume of the person that was appointed Director of the SRA?
I was advised the resume is forthcoming, but I'll follow up.
Oh, thank you.
5B, for an introduction to resolution, appointment of Teresa Cretano, PhD, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as member of the City of Scranton's Ethics Board for a term of five years. Teresa Cretano's PhD's term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire August 31, 2028.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved?
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I've known Dr. Cretano for at least 13-plus years since my time at the University of Scranton, and, you know, I think she's going to be a wonderful fit for the Ethics Board. I have all the faith in her to be able to serve on this body.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, for introduction to resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an easement substantially in the form attached heretofore as Exhibit A by and between PPL Electric Utilities Corporation and the City of Scranton for the property identified as county tax parcel numbers as noted located along Amelia Avenue.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved?
Second.
Before you make the motion...
On the second, oh, okay. I was just...
So, the second, but...
The legislation to amend is incorrect. As PPNL is the grantor, with the city as the grantee, which wouldn't make any sense. The city owns the property, they should be the grantor, PPNL should be the grantee. So I don't know if you want to send it back, you want to introduce it, table it until it's corrected, or what, but it's, the way it's written right now is incorrect.
I think there's been a motion and it's been seconded. So on the question, I'll ask council if you want to table it?
Yes.
So on the question, I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
So we have a motion to table and seconded until we can get the mistakes that were pretty obvious to our solicitor in there. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 5C is tabled.
5D, for introduction to resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Nilchin Corporation, doing business as guide to provide City of Scranton's Fire Department with a first responder mental health and wellness mobile application.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved?
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E, for introduction to resolution, amending resolution number 69, 2022, a resolution as amended entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials at the City of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the American Rescue Plan Act grant funds in the amount of $68,746,050 to reallocate funds from various budgeted ARP accounts to allow for focus and funding of disaster relief efforts and stormwater mitigation, development and remediation of pool complexes within the city, and to effectuate ongoing stewardship of taxpayer dollars.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved?
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'm happy to see that some of this ARP money is going towards the affected residents in North Scranton and Kaiser Valley. Since I got on this council, I've been talking about stormwater in West Mountain, I've been mentioning it for years. Like I said, I took the mayor and the flood team up there to go from the turnpike all the way down to the pump house. I pointed out many problems, and I think that was on my second week while I was on council. I took this team right to the area where the rockslide came across Newton Road. So this project can't come fast enough, it's been many years in the making. The one piece I would like to, I pointed it out while we were in caucus, there's been a project going on at Kaiser Valley Community Center for many years, they've had a grant there. I think they needed some money to get them over the top to finish their parking lot, to get the stormwater moving around that facility. It is a city-owned property, and I think it's an integral part of that neighborhood and moving water through that neighborhood to its proper places in the flood control channels below. Like I said, I brought it up in caucus tonight, and I hope it doesn't go unnoticed, and I hope the mayor does reach out to Kaiser Valley Community Center to find out what the Neighborhood Association there needs to put this project over the top.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, file the council number 86, 2023, ratifying the local declaration of emergency issued by the office of the mayor and authorizing the office of the mayor to exercise and enforce the emergency powers necessary to preserve the health, welfare, and safety of the citizenry of the City of Scranton as a result of the localized flooding that occurred on September 9, 2023 for a period of 14 days from the date of execution.
What is the recommendation, chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, this emergency powers resolution had a 14-day window. I'd just like to ask Mr. Volenberg that he reach out to the administration to find out what emergency powers actions have been taking in this, taken in this 14-day period. I just request that council be provided with a copy of all the actions that were taken by the mayor and her administration under that. As Mr. King said earlier in the meeting, it seems as another declaration is coming down, similar to other motions I've made in the past or other comments I've had in the past. If we could get this information so we know what we're going to be dealing with over another period of time, that would be great for me to pass that next declaration.
I will, sir.
Thank you, Frank.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 88, 2023, ratifying the time-sensitive payment of the mayor and other appropriate city officials for $2,500,000 from the City of Scranton's Court Awards Account as noted, and authorizing the reimbursement of the $2,500,000 from the City of Scranton's General Fund Account to pay for the time-sensitive unbudgeted court-ordered payment.
What is the recommendation, the chairperson of the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 89, 2023, setting forth its intent to issue a general obligation note series of 2023 in the principal amount of $4,070,000 pursuant to the Act of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, 53 PACS, Chapters 80, 82, as amended, reenacted, and supplemented, known as the Local Government Unit Debt Act.
What's the recommendation, the chairperson of the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson of the Committee on Finance, I recommend final vote of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 308, 2023, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton to the Commonwealth Financing Authority Multimodal Transportation Fund for up to $668,911 to be used towards a street sign replacement project.
What's the recommendation, chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I'll be voting yes, otherwise Norma Jeffries is going to never talk to me again. So this is a big vote tonight, it's very important. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes, of course.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 309, 2023, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton on behalf of the underground miners to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the PA Racehorse Development and Gaming Act for up to $124,060 for the project to be known as Brooks Mine Restoration and Improvement Project located at 1901 Mulberry Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18510, Naught Park, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the City of Scranton to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant for up to $124,060.
What is the recommendation, the chairperson of the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 81, 2023, approving and accepting the City of Scranton capital budget for the year 2024 pursuant to Section 904 of the city's Home Rule Charter.
What's the recommendation, the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, filed the council number 64, 2023.
This is the ordinance creating overtime reporting requirements for all city departments and employees. It's been tabled until we receive additional information from the administration.
8B, filed the council number 81, 2023.
This is the ordinance, it was the capital budget, and it was just moved to seventh order and voted on this evening for final vote.
8C, filed the council number 87, 2023.
This ordinance increases debt proceeds account by $3,790,000. It's been tabled until additional information is received. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.